Human and natural resources shall come to order for the purposes of having our third status hearing, which is an update on the overview of animal quarantine procedures pursuant to local laws. I want to thank Senator Uggan for being here and Senator and Dr. Yamashita for being here. I believe this is the third status hearing that we're going to have on the same issue, and I'm really hoping that tonight we have some kind of closure. I don't think we will, given the media reports that I've seen, but we certainly can discuss that and see what the next appropriate steps are that we need to take. We also, as I advise the Director and Dr. Poole, that we have another issue regarding service dogs coming into Guam, and so we're going to have that on the agenda as well. May I call up the Director of Agriculture and Dr. Poole? Thank you, Director. Welcome back. And also, more importantly, thank you, Dr. Poole. We missed you last time, but I announced that you had some medical condition that you were dealing with, and certainly we had to have the hearing nonetheless. And so, at the last hearing, we received a report from Director Taidegui that she was able to inspect two animal quarantine facilities. A proposed animal quarantine facility and the other one, she said that she did not inspect because when she drove by, she saw that there was no perimeter fence, and so she just drove off. And throughout the night, we had a discussion, and there was a commitment that, you know, the goal is to apply one standard across the board and to go through a thorough inspection using a checklist. And so, she made a commitment publicly that she would conduct the inspection on Waisao using the checklist, and then advise that proposed animal quarantine facility what the results are of that inspection. Dr. Poole, I want to say for the record that I think you misrepresented my position. I read an email where you said that what Dr. Joseph and I are forcing the Director to do would cause problems for the island. I'm not forcing the Director to do anything other than to do her job and to follow the law. Do you recall what I'm saying?
Yes, sir, I do.
Please speak into the mic, because when I read that email, I was really personally taken aback, because there was no need for this kind of discourse in terms of dividing the community and really misrepresenting my position as chairman of Oversight Authority over agriculture. I'm not telling the Director not to follow the law. I'm not ever once told her that she should give a permit for this animal quarantine facility. But in your email that you sent out to so many people, you've intimated that's what I was trying to do.
Is there a question, Senator?
Would you care to clarify what you meant? That if Dr. Joseph and I forced the Director to do what we're telling her to do, that it would cause great problems for this island?
Senator, you've said that these hearings will continue, you know? I mean, as soon as the Director approves this facility, the hearings stop, and it is implied that until she does approve them, that the hearings will continue. So, I mean, it's sort of inherent in that description that the only way this stops is when she approves that facility. Would you not agree?
No, I absolutely disagree, Dr. Poole. I disagree with your assessment of what we've been doing here. I absolutely disagree. And I said this hearing will continue until such point she does her job, you do your job, and you conduct these inspections applying the same standard. She, the Director admitted that she had communication with the other animal quarantine facilities, and when it came to Waisao's facility, she did not have one conversation with anyone on their staff. And she acknowledged that. She, then she said, "Well, it's supposed to be a surprise inspection." Fine, but she had personal communication with the other facilities. What I've been wanting to establish, and I think I successfully did that, is that you're applying a whole set of different standards for this one proposed animal quarantine facility, and yet the other animal quarantine facilities are being treated differently.
Of course, we don't agree, Senator.
And so, these hearings will continue for as long as the Director conducts an inspection based on the checklist, right?
She did that, sir.
Okay, and so, we'll get to that. And so, the Director did provide these reports for what she's done for the other facilities, and she said she would do that. Then, my understanding, I was able to get some information that the two of you did go to the Waisao facility and that you just drove off.
That's not true, sir.
So, then, tonight, we have an opportunity to get to the truth, and then we'll also have an opportunity for other presentations to be made. So, Director, you may proceed.
Let me just do my opening statement.
Before you do your opening, I'll give you an opportunity to retract what you said, Dr. Poole, about my motives here. And if you want to stand by what you said, then we'll leave it at that, but I want to give you an --
I don't think I talked about your motives, just that we're being pressured, we feel like we're being pressured to approve this place even though it's in clear violation of the law. If that's inaccurate, then we have the wrong impression, but that's our impression.
Good, because I made it very clear, and the Director said on the record that I've never once told her to approve this facility. Okay? Director?
Okay. Buenas, Senora Hafade, Chairman. Senator Rory Spishu, Chairman on Committee on Rules Federal and Micronition Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, Election Reform, and also members of the committee Frank Uggan and Senator Frank Uggan and Senator Yamashita. My name is Marikita Eftaidegui, Director of the Department of Agriculture. Upon your request, we are here again this evening along with my territorial vet, Dr. Poole, to give an overview of what I proposed to do during the last meeting, August 12, 2014. I did advise you in the previous meeting that within five working days, I would go and visit the Waisao Veterinary Clinic to inspect. On September, August 18, Dr. Poole and I went to inspect the Waisao Veterinary Clinic. Upon arrival, we still noticed that no perimeter fence was erected as what the law requires. This indicates that no perimeter fence is a critical defect on establishing a quarantine commercial facility, and it uses and wastes of time to go in line by line to inspect the clinic itself. We entered the clinic, remember, we entered the clinic and spoke to the receptionist that Dr. Poole and I are there to inspect the clinic. The receptionist left us and went behind the office to inform another person or another individual to entertain us, and this was a male individual who came out and stated that Dr. Joseph, Joe Joseph, is busy right now. We then waited for like five minutes or so, and then decided to leave, because, you know, it's a waste of time for waiting. I don't know how long are we going to wait. Again, Senator, I want to remind you that Dr. Joseph has ample time since July 29, 2014, to erect the perimeter fence if he's seriously considering to establish a quarantine station. Just to conform with the GARR, our agriculture would definitely go and inspect his place and even make sure that the toilet bowl does flush. Thank you, and this is my --
So, you didn't conduct an inspection as you promised this committee you would? The circumstances seem to be the same. When you submitted this picture to us showing that there's no, in your opinion, no perimeter fence, those conditions didn't change. At the hearing, you said that because you used the checklist for the other animal quarantine facilities, you will use the same checklist for this facility. You didn't go through the entire list, and then, my understanding, when Dr. Joseph's son was notified that you guys were there to conduct the inspection, and then when he went there, you guys just drove off.
May I speak, Senator? Senator, the inspection was conducted, and on any facility, when you encounter a critical defect, there's nothing more you can find that's going to change the outcome of that inspection. So, that inspection is over whenever you find a critical defect. The only reason that the other inspections were completed in the other facilities is because no critical defects were found. And I would have to point out that this isn't a debate as to whether this is a critical defect or not. Dr. Joseph's own checklist carries these as critical defects. This is the checklist that he provided two hearings ago, and if you look, you'll see that he's got a big C there for critical defect, and that's the quarantine must, in capital letters, be physically separated by a perimeter fence from all other areas not intended for quarantine, in addition, and so on. And then, you go back here on the back, and there's two more critical defects there.
But see, Dr. Poole, you don't consider a concrete perimeter as a perimeter fence to satisfy that requirement?
No, I don't, and the law doesn't. And so, I mean, it's a simple matter to change the law. If we want to allow people to turn their homes into quarantine facilities, we simply change the law. But the law is very clear. It says double door entrance and exits shall be provided to the CQF grounds.
If you went inside, Dr. Poole, you would see that they would have met that requirement.
Sir, I disagree. They talk about perimeter fences with barbed wire.
But you can't convince me otherwise, because you never stepped one foot into that area. You refused to.
We're talking about perimeter fences, and the perimeter fences have nothing to do with the internal structures. It's the perimeter fences that are required by this law. We can always change the law, Senator, but we can't ignore the fences. They described the fences, what is required, the barbed wire.
So, the other facilities have a perimeter fence just in the animal quarantine section?
They do, yes, sir.
And you're stating that for the record, they do?
Yes, I mean, you can go visit the Harper facility and see there's a perimeter fence all the way around with barbed wire and another fence inside of that. And Dr. Malakuti's facility that he's just completed, also, he hasn't quite completed it, but has almost completed it, it also has their perimeter fences, double fences with barbed wire. So, you know, our position has been, yes, everyone should conform to this law. Dr. Malakuti spent a large amount of money to conform to this law. So, but, I mean, the laws can always be changed, but we can't just arbitrarily say, "Well, the CQF grounds means the upstairs of some building with a veterinary clinic down below." That's clearly in violation of this law.
So, what is, Director, what was the next step you took after, in your opinion, conducting this inspection? Because this is not what, you know, how are these applicants going to know what the other defects are if you didn't go through the entire checklist? You know, Dr. Poole, you would have resolved this three months ago if you had just conducted the inspection the same way you conducted the other facilities. You want to talk about wasting time? If you had done this the proper way from the very beginning, we would not be here tonight. This would not, we would not have to have our third status hearing for the same issue. Director, what was the next thing you did after you said that they didn't --
Senator, if I could respond to that quickly, this would have been over in 2005 had Dr. Joseph built the fences that we told him then needed to be built by the law. Or the law could have been changed between 2005 and 2014. But, I mean, it's like 2005, you were there now, nothing has changed. We've been telling him all along, this law requires it. He agrees with his own checklist that those are critical defects, those things are required.
But I'll tell you why nothing has changed, Dr. Poole, because there was no closure. You didn't conduct the inspection based on the checklist.
Sir, I disagree. We did conduct the inspection based on the checklist.
So, Doctor, so, thank you, Dr. Poole. Director, did you give him a formal notice that he felt the inspection?
Correct. I did send him a formal notice. It was email, and also somebody dropped his formal letter to his office.
So, in your own procedures, what recourse does a proposed commercial quarantine facility have if they disagree with your findings? Is there another higher up that can review this? Are you open to maybe asking Public Health to do the inspection or another government agency to avoid any conflicts or any --
Yeah, I did ask Public Health to come along with us and inspect, help us inspect, but they said that they are lacking personnel and they cannot, you know, come along.
Well, asking and them doing are two different things, right? And I can't confirm if you actually did that.
So, I did call Gillian, both Director and Deputy Director, that somebody from Public Health would come along, but they told me that they cannot do it at that time when we were scheduled to go and inspect the facilities.
Yeah. Senator Uggan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. You know, I had not been in attendance of a number of the previous hearings because of conflict in scheduling, but I'm looking and I'm listening very intently in terms of how this process has proceeded over the course of the last several months. And I understand, Dr. Poole, and Ms. Taidegui, your perspective in terms, okay, there's a major defect, and we're not even going to proceed to step two. But if you have an entire checklist of 10 items, you find one defect, it's a major defect based on your statements, one major defect, that automatically concludes any follow-on inspection in terms of completing that and say, okay, this defect, regardless as to who the vet is, please, I need to qualify this, because, let's say, for example, there's another vet that would like to come in and establish a quarantine facility, and if, in fact, the inspection team proceeds to that particular facility, looks at one defect and says, "I'm sorry, this is already concluded," as a representative of the government of Guam, I would think that it is our obligation to make sure that we take care of the 10 items on the checklist, and then say, "By the way, number one, already automatically disqualifies any further consideration until this is addressed. Items two, three, four meet the requirements. Item four and five, you need to make these manual adjustments." That's what I expected this inspection to carry out, to be carried out, the way I expected it to be carried out. And just listening to some of the concerns, it's kind of interesting, because I guess my question then is just a general state question. If, rather than a perimeter fence, a concrete wall meeting the size or the height of the requirement by law, would that be a major defect if the concrete wall was utilized other than a cyclone fence?
Senator, yes, because the law states clearly a fence. It doesn't say a fence or whatever we think might be better than a fence. It says a fence and describes the fence, you know, nine-gauge fencing with barbed wire and that sort of thing. So, we are happy to enforce whatever laws you pass. And back to your original point, I'm not sure if you know, but the full courtesy inspection that you're talking about was already conducted. It was conducted by Public Health in 2005, two pages of defects, and one of them, or actually, three of those defects had to do with these fencing. By the way, these are three critical defects, not one, having to do with the fencing and the separation and the double entrances to the grounds and that sort of thing. So, that was all done in 2005. So, there's a very clear intent by the respondent not to follow the law. So, to continue on implies that, well, maybe we'll find something inside that will make this not an unsatisfactory inspection, not a critical defect. That is simply impossible when you have --
No, no, I understand, because your definition, your statement was a major defect, and I understand from your perspective. I'm just saying, this is a 10-item checklist, and really, the inspection should encompass the 10-item checklist, and then go back to that individual, the owner of that facility, and say, of the 10 items, I'm sorry, three are major defects. You will not qualify, and these are the remedies that you have to apply. That's really where, what I'm looking at in terms of how this resolution eventually can come about, because if the 10th step was completed in this case, you submitted a report to the Director, the Director submitted a report to the Governor, if, in fact, she's going to provide the Governor a copy, and to the Oversight Chair, and there's very little I can say to refute, one, two, three, four, five, if it's all delineated.
Senator, that's already happened. I can give you a copy of that inspection.
No, 2005, I beg to differ. 2005, 2014 are absolutely nine years apart.
But nothing's changed. In terms of the critical defects are still there. So, there's a very clear intent on the respondent not to conform with the law. And so, you can't imply that, you know, going inside, perhaps, we'll find something that's going to change the outcomes.
No, 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 please, please, I'm not implying that. And I just said, if there's a checklist of 10 items, please complete the checklist of 10 items, because we are public servants in our capacity. And then, provide the individual business owner the opportunity to be able to review this, and if he or she is not able to apply the remedies or fix it within a restricted timeline based on your requirements, then guess what? No permits will be granted. That's what I'm saying. I am not saying that by virtue of going to the, through this quarantine facility, that everything else that you find would be perfectly, would allow for things to change if, in fact, there's a major defect. But let's say, for example, item six, seven, and eight off a 10-point checklist, if those items are also defects, then I think we, as representatives of the people and the government, should provide information to that individual, regardless as to whether it's Waisao or any of the other vets. That's all I'm saying. That's my perspective. That's the way I view our responsibility, is that if I'm going to inspect a facility, let's say DPW, you don't have DPW to step in and say, "Oh, by the way, this is a defect at the front steps, so all the other inspections are automatically deleted." No, because GWA has to step in and provide their own inspection. Some of the other entities, public agencies, have to provide their own inspection, and then DPW comes back based on that comprehensive report and says, "Homeowner, we will not give you the permit because of this major defect, but all the other agencies have already concurred with allowing you to proceed once this defect is addressed." That's all I'm saying. Rather than looking at a facility and saying, "There's a one major defect, so we're just not going to do the inspection." And I say this from the perspective of a public servant.
Yes, sir.
Working on behalf of the government of Guam. I don't say it in any other capacity other than what our people owe any individual, whether it's Waisao or any other quarantine facility. What our people owe these individuals is equitable treatment in terms of a comprehensive assessment.
Senator, I think we've done that.
Dr. Poole, enough said on my end, but I just shared my perspective in terms of how I think this whole situation should have been carried out, because I'm telling you, you bring back a list of 10 items, checklist, and there's three major defects, how am I going to refute that? Even if we have three other public hearings, oversight hearings, how am I going to refute that? Now, the owners would be on the owner to be able to look at some of these things and say, "Okay, we need to fix this, or we need to address it."
And Senator, you may have information I don't have. Do you have any indication that he plans to put in fences? Has he ever told you anything like that?
No, that's why I generalize my statement, not only applying it to this particular vet who's requesting an inspection of his quarantine facility. I'm saying any individual business that applies for quarantine inspection, we owe it as public service. And that's all I'm saying, because the way I look at it is that we entered a home, and we saw one defect, and we said, "Okay, I'm sorry, this whole home will not be permitted," rather than giving the homeowner that opportunity to be able to understand that every single item has been addressed with one exception, or two or three. Enough said from me, Mr. Chairman. I think I share my perspective, because I think that that's really how the process should have carried out, on behalf of applying fairness and equitable treatment. And incidentally, I'll close with this statement. An inspection conducted in 2005, to me, if I was the applicant, okay, defects were recognized in 2005, it's 2014, I would think that if I'm asking my government to inspect my home or my facility, that at least my government's public servants owe me at least, the very least, the opportunity to be able to conduct that inspection, rather than falling back on 2005 and saying these, because we don't know if there's been any remedies with regards to some of those issues, with the exception of one. And that's one that you have identified repeatedly as major defects. But enough said on my --
Yes, sir, and thank you for that. But we have been continuing with this right along. You know, we've been writing letters to him, telling him that this is a letter from Director Torres, who was the last Director, and this was in 2010, and he told him the same thing, that you cannot be considered until you build the fences that are required by law. And so, we've done everything that we can to order to make him understand that this process cannot go forward until you build the fences. And he's never given us the slightest indication that he plans to. He's said all along that I don't need the fences, I'm not going to build the fences, it's not going to happen. And we wish that someone would change the law. If that's what the community wants, then change the law. But the law as it is simply does not allow us to approve that facility as is, and we just can't go any further with this. This facility simply cannot be approved under this law by our department or anybody that's going to try to obey the law. We simply need to change the law if that's what we want to do. If you want to let people turn their homes into quarantine facilities, I'll enforce any law you pass. I promise I will, and I'll do it fairly. I promise I will. But with this law, we simply can't get that facility where it needs to go. It's impossible.
So, you continue to reference the law, rightfully so.
Yes, sir.
Then, in your opinion, does the law need to be revisited?
No.
Or should we proceed as status quo?
No, in my opinion, it's a very good law. But if the community, if the legislature feels differently, then that's fine. The legislature sometimes passes laws that I don't agree with, and I absolutely have to enforce them, and that's my job. My job is not to interpret or to hedge or to cut the corners. My job is to enforce the laws as written, and that's absolutely what our department is trying to do here. But if the legislature wants to change it, we'll absolutely enforce whatever laws you pass. I promise.
Thank you, Senator Uggan. Senator Yamashita?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Poole?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Director. Dr. Poole, as our Oversight Chair stated at the beginning, you weren't with us the last hearing. Nobody is debating the soundness of this law, but I'm the one who asked to just, I asked the Director to take that checklist and go back and do it, and to visit the place. And I really thought that you had, because I thought I received something in my email box that shared the checklist, and I guess I was wrong. I don't know what I was looking at then. And the reason, and we had this discussion, this is our third time now, Dr. Poole, and Madam Director, and so, I had thought that just for the sake of doing this to show the overall picture of the standards of what you see it as, so then they can move forward and everyone would have an understanding. That's all we wanted. No one's debating if this law should be amended or any of that. We're well aware in 2010, you know, Director Torres had signed off on a letter, and now we're back, now it's 2014. And so, that's what, you know, I was expecting, and I had thought that when you went and the time was an issue, I thought you were going to go back the next day. So, I guess I got wrong information. And for me, I just wanted it to be done. You gave him the letter and the checklist, and then, you know, for me, that would have been over. So, you know, you weren't here, and Madam Director was really the one who agreed to do it. And so, it's unfortunate that we're here tonight talking about the same thing. And I know that the fence is the high priority item, it's the critical, you know, standard, I get it, but I'm the one who asked to take the 10 items and just go and visit and do it so that we can move forward.
I did, Madam Chairman, Senator Eileen?
Yes.
We did, I did bring along the checklist.
Okay.
This is the checklist that I bring along that we intend to, you know, to go through as we visit, but then, like I say, when we came in, he wasn't there to entertain us, so we decided to turn around.
This is where I, first, let me say, I appreciate --
So, Madam Director, I had asked for that to be done, just to close this loop. That's all. This kind of interaction really is unnecessary anymore. I just, and I know, I already know what you're thinking. I know, I know. But we wanted an overall picture. That's what was being asked for, and that is what was agreed to, just an overall picture. And she agreed that she was going to go and do it. And so, now it's looking like I'm beating her up, and this is not what we wanted. We really didn't want this. We wanted a checklist that was done, and with, you know, the assessment, and to stay here, and then we move forward. That's all we wanted.
Madam Senator, if I could offer this, if it will help, if we get, you know, they're required to submit plans. If we were to get plans, that he has a contractor, and here's the fences he's going to build, then I'll personally promise to go down the same day we get those plans.
But see, Dr. Poole, what I had asked for, understanding that the fence, the fence is a huge issue, I understand that already, but I wanted the other nine items to be assessed, because that night, we kept talking and talking about all these other, well, I guess, two other places, and the process that had kicked in. And so, I simply said, "Can we just complete this checklist?" Because the first hearing was, "Do we have a checklist?" So, then, the second hearing, we came back with the checklist, and that was great. And then, it was, "Well, can you apply this checklist?" And the answer was yes, and I thought, "Well, that's great." And so, then, I thought that's what we did, but the timing was off, and then I thought we were going to go back the next day, right? And so, that's all I'm saying. And it's not, I know the fence, and I know that's huge, and I know it's critical. I would want the dogs, we want to make sure the dogs don't run away and that they're safe, and I understand all of that, right? But it was the other items that we were asked, what's the overall picture? It was a committee request, that's what it was, and it was agreed to. And so, now I feel like we're, as Senator Uggan was saying, you know, it's enough already. We already got the answer, you know, and this is where we're still at. And my guess is, we're going to ask you to do that checklist, notwithstanding that we, the perimeter fence is still a defect, and, you know, I don't think we need to have a fourth status hearing on this.
Well, I want to say that the comments of my two colleagues are exactly what we've been saying for the last three status hearings, Dr. Poole. I thought we were all under the same understanding that the Director would apply the same standard, and everybody will be treated equally under the law. She started to say that she was willing to go do the inspection, but Dr. Joseph wasn't available. Now, I don't think that's a fair comment, because when his son drove up, you guys just drove off very fast. guys just drove off very fast, and there's video of you just driving off. And so, I guess, from what Senator Uggan is saying also, I'm looking at this from a public service perspective, that, and the Director agreed, it was, Senator Amishita's correct, she said, can't you just take the checklist, go, because there are other items in the checklist, right? And so, if they don't have hot running water or something, how would they know unless you go, you thoroughly go through all the requirements? They have met, maybe the other quarantine facility may have had a perimeter fence, but you may not know what those defects may be unless you go inside. In this case, it's just the opposite. But if you don't even go inside to the facility, then how would you be able to let them know what other areas need to be, need to be improved? And in this own checklist, it says, if there are any unsatisfactory defects, then those must be corrected within 10 days. A final percentage score of less than 90% requires another inspection in 30 days. You didn't even get to that point where you had a final percentage.
If you look at the last one on his list, any item designated as failed requires immediate closure of the commercial quarantine facility. This is on Dr. Joseph's list.
But that's not the list you're using.
It's the same concept, sir.
But listen, you can't just pick and choose. If something works against him, you go with his list, if something
Actually, we wanted to use his list.
But you're not using his list for the others.
We asked to use his list.
But, Dr. Poole, the list I'm reading from does not say immediate closure.
It does
So I just don't, I just hope the people watching can see that you have not been fair, Dr. Poole.
I can't agree, Senator.
Listen, you you just
And
You just agreed, you just, you just read from his list, but you didn't use his list for the others.
We wanted to.
Dr. Poole?
Yes, sir, we wanted to.
But you did not, Dr. Poole.
They're the same.
Dr. Poole, there, but in this list, it does not say, in this list, there's no footnote that you read.
Senator, do you see a different outcome, no matter how many times we go inside, do you see a different outcome?
I don't care what the outcome is. I don't care
We do, we absolutely do.
No, let me tell you what I care about. I care about these people needing to be treated equally under the law.
They are, Senator.
As Senator, no, they're not. As Senator Uggan and Senator Amishita said, if you had done the checklist, and the same checklist you used for the other animal quarantine facilities, and you came back with a thoroughly completed checklist and said, they didn't get approved because of the following reasons, I rest my case, there's nothing else that I can do.
Senator, I said
But for as long as you refuse to do your job, the way you're supposed to do your job, we will continue to have these status hearings once a week.
Senator, that's fine.
Until what point? Until your contract is up?
Senator, you can do anything you want along those lines. We are simply trying to enforce the laws as written. The reason that those other facilities had a complete inspection is because no critical defects were encountered. When a critical defect is encountered, that inspection is over, it's an unsatisfactory defect.
Well
Dr. Joseph, in nine years, has not given the slightest indication that he ever intends to comply with the law. I think you have to agree with that. He's never given us the slightest indication that he intends to comply with this law. So to me, we either need to recognize that this facility is not going to make it, Dr. Joseph is not going to do it, or we need to change the law.
But in this, in this checklist that you're using, it just talks about a perimeter fence, it doesn't talk about barbed wire, it doesn't talk about cyclone.
No, sir, it's all
Don't you think concrete fencing is more sufficient than this in your own checklist?
No, I don't. And and it is in there, the cyclone fencing is in there.
Toward the end, for individual, individual cages.
That's how it is in the Guam code, sir.
But for the individual cages, for the animals, for the dogs and the cats.
No, for the perimeter fencing, it says in there, nine gauge, eight feet barbed wire.
Let me just say that I, immediately after I received the Director's response, and I wasn't satisfied that you did conduct inspection based on the Director's public commitment, I wrote to the Attorney General, asking him to weigh in on the situation, and he has not responded. But certainly, when we come back next Wednesday, I'm hoping that he would be physically here to try to give the guidance that we're looking for, right?
Senator, I know we have more to do on this issue, but I need to leave soon. Can we do my part of the assistance animals?
Wait, before you do, I, I don't want to go too long tonight, but I want to bring up Dr. Joseph and his son.
I'll have to go then, Senator. I can't stay that long. But but, I mean, they get their time, but I, but I need to do
It's very obvious what's going on here. So if you can't be objective here, Dr. Poole, tell me, and I'll have someone else do the inspection.
Senator, that's fine.
I don't get to ask questions of him?
No, you don't. This is not a, it's not a court.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not going to do any back and forth, and I'm going to continue to maintain decorum of what I'm going to do.
Decorum would be to have him stay.
I recognize you two to come up real quickly, because we have another issue that's, that I think is very important, and that's the service dogs and how they're able to come to Guam. But just giving you a few minutes, Dr. Poole.
Senator, I don't have the few minutes, I'm sorry.
Well, the problem is, you leave, your Director makes a commitment, then she goes back to the office, and you undo whatever she committed to do.
Senator, I work for her, I don't undo anything. She's my boss.
Well, I hope that's the case.
If I may, Senator, I'll take his place. I'm very aware of the situation here, and any questions you have, even with the service dogs as well, if that's okay.
You can't just stay one minute?
I can stay one minute, but that, but then, I've got to spend that on service animals.
So you've had, you have time if we're going to talk about your issue.
Senator, I've got one minute, and and I'll, and I'll spend it on whatever you want me to spend it on.
Well, we'll just continue to go through, and if you leave, you leave, right? And I want to express my disappointment for the record.
This is Guam law. This is Guam law on the service animals. And this is
I'm aware, yeah.
Contacted Hawaii.
Already.
Have a response.
Right, okay.
Okay. Howdy, Senator, I just want to let you know, I'm Telo Taidegui, I'm the Governor's Special Assistant, and I'm here just to fill in for Dr. Poole. I know that our Director Tita is already having people who are waiting for her at her house at 6:00, and I'm sure that she told you earlier on in the evening that she needed to make her statement and then leave. However, I'm here, if you have any other questions, to move forward on the
Well, we all have, we all have something to do, right? We all have somewhere to go.
Absolutely, sir.
If you have to leave, leave, but, you know, let the record reflect that you left.
Okay.
Dr. Joseph?
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm Dr. Joseph, Waisao Animal Hospital. I would like to comment a few little things on what Dr. Poole said. First off, he refers to the 2005 inspection. He says that the 2005 inspection found that the fence was not proper. And I did discuss that with Department of Public Health.
Wait, excuse me, Doctor, since you're leaving, Director, are you going to go and do an inspection based on the checklist, like what you committed to doing?
Then I have to go back to the office and discuss that, okay?
Well, you're the Director, he just said you make the call. We're going to come back here Wednesday. I'm going to recess the status hearing, we're going to come back Wednesday at 5:30. Director, you you said that you would do a
Yeah, but like I say, you know, I entered the building, and he wasn't there.
No, you entered the clinic, you didn't enter the quarantine area.
Senator, if I may, Senator, they did enter the building to make the inspection, to fulfill the obligations of these checklists, or at least to go through it.
They didn't.
Unfortunately, they were told that they could not move forward because Dr. Joseph was not there, and he was busy. So how can they fulfill their obligation on moving forward to do a checklist when they're not allowed to even enter any part of the clinic to continue on their investigation, or their checklist, or inspection?
So
But they were told that Dr. Joseph was busy. They waited
Five minutes.
You know, five minutes, well, when they say he's busy, they they have other things to do, another checklist to go, or other people to see, and Department of Agriculture is very, very busy, especially with the cows coming in and things like that, so, the cattle. So they waited five minutes, even after being told. So, Senator, at that point, we then instructed Tita, at that time, to do another checklist at a later time. Unfortunately, Dr. Poole was not available at the time, on that next day, and then the following week, before this hearing started up, they weren't able to do the, a second inspection. So, Senator, we do plan on making a second inspection, but however, like everybody else, we treat them fairly, and that means, we don't let them know where they're coming. I mean, that's, it's obvious, they can be doing whatever they want when we get there, and then when we leave, they put everything back. So it's so important, Senator, that
You're, okay, you're, excuse me
That we will doing a, let me finish, no, 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 let me finish, let me finish, Senator, let me finish, I'm almost done, okay? I'm almost done. So, that being said, of course, they had the hearing today. So what they're going to try and do again is do another inspection, go over there, walk in, regardless of the fences there, regardless of, you know, the area, and and walk in, and again, if Dr. Waisao is unavailable, for them to take him through the clinic to do the inspection, we will send a notice again to them, just like the good Director did, right after going there, and submitted this paperwork to him. So, Senator, rest assured that we will go a third time, and hopefully, Dr. Wise, Dr. Joseph will be available to accommodate them, to take them through the clinic, so they can fulfill their inspection. Thank you so much.
Okay, your, your comments, Senator Taidegui, are very clear. Your comments are very clear, but they contradict what the territorial vet just said five minutes ago. He said unless Dr. Joseph shows him construction plans, that he would construct a permit, he'll be happy to go do the inspection. That's why
Like I said, Senator, we will do another inspection, regardless if the plans come. That'll be another area, that'll be a C grade for not providing the plans, okay? So we will make sure that's on the list as well. And before I leave tonight, we want to make sure that whatever checklist we use, whether it be Dr. Joseph checklist, or what the Guam law says, I need to know from you first. And I would like to see that, you know, hard copy, and you let us know, because it's obvious here that, and if I may say, Senator
I think whatever checklist you use is the same checklist you use for the other facilities.
Absolutely, I agree, I agree with you wholeheartedly. So we will make sure we use that checklist, okay, Senator? Thank you.
Thank you. Ben, you, for the record, do you have to go too?
Yes, I do, Senator, but I do want to mention, I do want to mention
Wait, wait.
I do want to mention
Just because I do this, and I look at you, doesn't mean you can talk.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know, I didn't know what that was. I didn't know what that was, Senator, sorry. I was just going to say, if you wanted to talk about the service animals first, that will take like one minute.
Telo, this is my hearing, not yours.
Yes, I do know, Senator, I'm a public
And you're not
Person just like you, and this is what this is, is a public hearing room, Senator.
Absolutely, Telo.
Public hearing room.
Absolutely, absolutely. But we're here to try to
I tell you what, Senator, I'll sit here, okay? I'll make arrangements on, and text them that I won't be able to make it, okay?
Well, are we going to have a conversation, or are you going to talk every time I talk?
I'm done, Senator, go ahead.
Okay.
Ben? Well, for the record, my name is Benjamin Schiff, and I just wanted to make a couple comments on the statement she just made real quickly, and then I'll let Dr. Joseph go over his things, and I'll go over the main things. One, I sat next to the Director last hearing, and I promised I would make myself available for a surprise inspection done at our facility. I believe, I didn't just promise her, but I promised the people of Guam, I'd make myself available, and I truly can say I did. I got there with them being in the premises of only five minutes, and we agreed to a surprise inspection. My father is a doctor, if he is doing surgery, or if he's in the middle of an animal that needs care, he can't just stop. That's why I promised myself I would make myself available. However, when I arrived there, Dr. Poole would not get down, talk to me, he would not even stop the car. And when he came into Waisao, and he asked the receptionist to, they're there for it, of course, our receptionist's going to go in back, because our receptionist handles the lobby, relaying the message. Within five minutes, we were available for them to do it, and they didn't want to do the inspection. So, I just wanted to say, it doesn't matter if they drove by three, four, five, 10 times, they never done one inspection, they never took one single step up the Waisao quarantine facility. So, I don't know how anyone could look at that in any other direction.
Mayor, please come forward, yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead, Dr. Joseph.
Okay. You come in a building, somebody comes to your office, if you're available within five and 10 minutes, that's pretty good. Okay? I can be doing surgery, I'm in with a client. Okay? These people are citizens of Guam, and they deserve their time in the room, and their animals to be taken care of. Five minutes is ridiculous, walking out. My son made himself available. I showed up as my son was walking into the building. So I was there, what, six, seven minutes after they arrived? This is ridiculous. This just shows that this is a personal issue. Okay, going back to critical defect, the 2005 inspection noted that there was that defect, we talked to DPHSS, and that's where the phrase of "at least" in the law about the fence comes into effect. At least means at a minimum. Okay? We have had other things. Here's a definition of fence from on the dictionary, noun, a barrier enclosing or bordering a field yard, usually made of posts and wire or wood, used to prevent entrance, to confine or to mark a boundary. Fence. Okay? In addition, if it is a critical defect, Dr. Poole has for the last year written up Harper Quarantine for having the wrong fence. Now, he suddenly says, well, it's within variation of .125 allowed by construction of a fence. Well, excuse me, the fence is two and a half by two and a half. We've measured it, we've shown it to people. 1.25, 2.125 is not 2.5. So if we're going to talk about a critical defect, that means that they have now authorized Dr. Harper, the military, and Dr. Melacuti to put up the wrong fence. If it's such a critical defect, why don't the other people have to do it? I'm going to go on to another thing. They have had other critical defects they've told me about. She wrote me a letter that I can't get inspected, because I don't have an inspection permit, a sanitary permit. Oh, I'm sorry, not that. A change of occupancy permit. None of these other places have it either. They said that was a critical defect. But now that everybody else doesn't have one, it's not a critical defect. They wrote me that I had to have a security system. I have a security system. I have cameras in every single cage. When you saw it, the cameras weren't installed, they are installed now. Okay? And they will be visible on my cellphone, 24 hours a day, they'll be visible on the people's homes. Okay? You want to talk about security, we got it. They don't have any security on their fence. Anybody can cut in at any time. And she said it was a critical defect that disallowed me. The inspection that was done 2005 went on even with the critical defect. And that's a standard. If we accept Dr. Poole's assumption that he can say there's a critical defect, that means a public health inspector can walk up to a restaurant, say, I saw a cockroach outside, you're unsanitary, you fail. Is that the type of system we want to have here in Guam? Director Taidegui, Director Torres, when he wrote his letter, he took his information from Dr. Poole, because that's who was informing him at that time. I want to tell you about other inspections we've had. We had a groomer named Marta, Pauline Marta, who wanted to get a grooming license. And this is all on your paperwork that we've submitted before. And she needed to get approval from Dr. Poole, because it's grooming, it's animal inspection, sanitary inspection, and he refused to give it to her for months. Tax and Rev overruled him, gave her the building, the business permit, because he refused to do an inspection for her because she was working for me. We have asked the Department of Government to get us our occupancy permit. We have everything done except Dr. Poole's inspection. This is not the quarantine, this is the hospital. And he has refused to do it for over two years. When they say that we have not requested, we have requested well over a dozen times in writing, stamped received, to have an inspection and the inspection form. Now they write an inspection form, and the way they wrote it, my, my thing qualifies, 'cause it says a fence. The law says "at least." Okay? I don't see how you can say an animal can get out of a concrete wall with concrete fences, uh, with concrete ceiling. It just, it's not gonna happen. Okay? I actually don't want to even bother with the fence right now anymore, because what originally this was about, was this was about the problems with quarantine. Dr. Poole was asked to bring in all the inspection forms. Has he done so? I don't believe so. Dr. Poole has failed to inspect these animals. I sent Rory a letter detailing three new people-
Senator?
I'm sorry, Senator, I apologize. Dr. Poole was supposed to turn in all these inspection reports. Okay? He hasn't. No inspections have been done on the animals leaving. This last week, uh, there was no inspection of Lola Bean Blaz as she left quarantine. Uh, Mr. Brown, I hope he's here and he'll talk to you about all the hassles, how his animals kept in quarantine excessively long time so they could get more money. Chloe Anderson was picked up at Dr. O'Sheera's clinic. You are not allowed to discharge animals except at quarantine. This is what went on that originally started a lot of this fight. Dr. Harper was housing the quarantined animals at her clinic. And we caught him at it. And we have Gina, uh, Dr. Harper's assistant, on film telling us that they do this. We have Dr. Meadow's letter saying that they crammed her dogs into small cages at her clinic. We finally got them to move the quarantine animals from Dr. Harper's hospital to the quarantine. Now they're in a quarantine that hasn't had a, uh, inspection forever, when you permitted the military to build a new quarantine. You told Dr. Harper-
Mayor, I'm kind of confused here. Mayor, you have your time.
When you asked Dr. Har, when you had the military build a quarantine, you asked Dr. Harper-
Excuse me, are you gonna interrupt us the way Senator Titegwe's been interrupting us?
Senator, I am interfering because I, I don't understand what, what, what they're saying. I thought we were talking about what Tita Titegwe was talking about.
Well, it's all, well, it's all encompassing Mayor, it's regarding the animal quarantine processes and laws.
I thought we were talking about the fence. And that's what, that, you know, I, I, I came here to, to testify because what these two gentlemen are saying, some of them, some of the things that are saying is not true. Because in fact, Senator, I was at that, that inspection that happened, and they were saying that Dr. Poole and Tita Titegwe weren't inside there. But that's, that's a lie. And, you know, that's why I'm asking, because, you know, and I, I hope you don't chastise me about wanting to leave too, but, you know, I don't understand what's going on here.
Go ahead and speak into the mic because there are people that are following on TV. Just, just let me, uh, yeah, I think you've, um-
You know, there's a lot of things here that I don't understand, okay? And I just wanna talk about the things that I, that I understand. And one thing that I understand is some of these people are telling lies, them saying that Dr. Poole and Tita Titegwe weren't, weren't inside that building. That's what I wanna say. A lot of these things that I don't understand, I don't wanna get into details, because I don't want anybody to misconstrue what I'm saying.
So Mayor, you, you, you said you were there during the inspection?
Yes, I was there.
Did they go to the second floor?
No, they didn't.
So they didn't, so they, so Mayor, they didn't conduct the inspection?
I, I'm not saying that they didn't conduct the inspection. What I'm saying Senator, is they were in the building. And he said that he wa, they weren't in the building, and he said that he spoke to them and they just drove out, and he did it. He didn't talk, and you know, if you can lie about things like, like that, then what else can we lie about? And you know what? I just don't understand, you know, that there's, you know, one, one thing about this hearing, and one thing about Dr. Poole and Dr. Tita Titegwe, I think, is that they don't wanna mess up with their, with their inspection, and maybe if they go in there and go through the inspection, when they know that the critical thing about the inspection was the fence, that they would misconstrue that maybe Tita Titegwe might find something there that's gonna change the outcome of the inspection. And you know, we gotta take that into consideration, because what if there's a gray area and they say that, you know, there's a, there's a, there's, there's a loop in the law that they didn't follow, so, uh, Dr. Joseph, Dr. Joseph's quarantine, uh, building should be given the permit. And you know, that's what I'm thinking about, that's why maybe they don't wanna go in and, and, and do the inspection. Because they found a major defect that doesn't require them to go in the, eh, eh, in the building to make the inspection. I, I know that you guys are saying about the, the checklist, why-
But Mayor, but the, but the checklist that they used for the other two facilities is not the same checklist they're using for this facility, and the checklist doesn't say you just stop when there's a major defect and you call it a day.
Yeah, Senator, but, you know, I don't wanna argue with you, but does the checklist say you can, you, you, you can't or you could? It doesn't, right? So that can say you, you shouldn't or you, you should. It doesn't say either way. You know, with all due respect Senator, you know, I, there's, there's a lot of confusion here, but, and maybe we, we should just follow the law.
And I'm hoping we follow the law, and that's what we're trying to do here. And the director said that she would do an inspection based on the checklist, and that's what she was supposed to do. She went to the facility, and there's, maybe, maybe we should be clear, there's, we're talking, when we say building, there's two areas. One, where they, where they, like their clinic, and then you go upstairs, and it's the animal quarantine facility section, and they, they did not step one foot inside the proposed quarantine facility.
Yes, Senator, but, and they didn't, they didn't wanna go inspect, you know, and the law-
If you're saying they weren't allowed to, when, when Ben showed up, they've said, "Well, we have to go."
They were told that the doctor, the doctor was busy, so, um, that meant to them, okay, he's not coming out. Now, that being said Senator, now you're taking their word against his word.
No, no, I am so-
And choose where you wanna choose, but, you know, choose what side you wanna choose here, that's fine, uh, Senator, but they're telling you they did go inside, he was unavailable to take them up-
You shouldn't be dividing the community, Telo.
And going up, sorry?
You shouldn't be dividing the community, and I'm not choosing sides.
Senator, you know, with all due respect, it's what's happening here that's dividing the community.
But we've already established that by Wednesday, she's gonna conduct the inspection based on the checklist, so-
You know Senator, I just want you to know that I've got all the respect for all of us here, okay?
Same here, Mayor.
But in the, in, in, in the, you know, they, they set the inspection for a certain time. Why wasn't he there?
It was an unannounced inspection, there was no time-
They knew that they were gonna come at 10 o'clock.
I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry Mayor, I, um, not to interrupt you, but I, I do wanna clarify, 'cause you did say a couple of my statements were false, and you were saying that, "Well, here's the video that you can watch of Dr. Poole leaving when I pull up right now, you can watch this." And I'm asking him right here in this video, sir.
You know what?
So you, so you're asking him to pick between this story or my story?
No, no, I'm not asking him to pick anything, I'm telling, I'm saying my statement. I am sorry too, but I'm not asking him to do anything. I'm telling him the truth.
This is the-
All I said, all I said sir, is that, all I said-
Yes, sir.
All I said was, "Sir, Senator, I am not asking you to do anything. I'm just setting my statement." And my statement is, I didn't see him try to talk to Dr. Poole or Dr. Tita Titegwe when they drove off, that's all I said.
Okay.
And, and the other thing is, and there's a clarification about which building we're talking about-
Okay.
But they were in sight.
Okay, and so the director and Senator Titegwe, Ms. Titegwe agreed that they were gonna go back and conduct an inspection based on the checklist, so I think we made that point very clear, right?
So Senator, can I just ask something?
Yes, Mayor.
If they go in and do, they'll go through all the 10 checklists, the, and they, you know, does that implicate them, and maybe saying that there's a loophole, because they went in there and then there's a loophole, so they should give him the, the permit?
No, actually, it covers us, because if they do their job and conduct the inspection the same way they conducted the other facilities, then we're done here.
Okay.
We're done here, because I've never said-
Then I don't have a problem with that.
Mayor, I've never said go and inspect and approve them. They're very, they're, and, and, and the reason why this thing has dragged for so long is because there's no closure.
Senator, if we can also ask the other, you know, uh, Dr. Joseph's clinic, that when they do show up, that there will be somebody there to take them upstairs, to inspect, that they will not be told they cannot go upstairs without the doctor.
I was there.
Well, they were told, according to them, they were told not, they couldn't do anything, they couldn't go upstairs. So they couldn't fulfill their obligation on this inspection. So, all I'm saying is that when they do show up for this, this inspection, unannounced inspection, that they will be able to walk the facility and inspect the facility, if that's okay.
Yes, that is okay.
Okay.
I sat next to the director last meeting, and I promised her I would make myself available. For, for her to come here today and say I wasn't available for her, no one was allowed upstairs, is not true, because she sat next to me when I promised her I would make myself available. In the video, you can see her in the car with Dr. Poole driving off.
Well, let me just say, the last status hearing, the director admitted, the director admitted that, the director admitted that she has had conversations with the other commercial quarantine facilities, but has not had one conversation with Waisao. So, see Mayor, there's, they're not being treated the same way the others have been treated.
And I would like to emphasize the point that everybody else was notified about their inspections, and they are insisting on a surprise inspection. They are insisting-
That's true. Okay, so-
So anyways, I want to go on, and I really wanna get off-
I think we're done here, I wanna hear from Cindy Hansen. Uh, Dr. Joel and Ben, thank you, and we're gonna come back Wednesday again.
I'm, I'm so sorry, I just have a couple of statements to make, and I did, um-
You can make your statement, um, yeah, very quickly, and thank you Mayor for your participation tonight.
Okay, I just wanted to say, um, sir, I don't believe you're dividing the community, I actually recommend you for all the things you've done. With all my FOIA requests and everything, I believe, um, with Dr. Poole getting paid $100,000 every fiscal year, that he, as a government service, he does need to do these inspections. Um, out of our taxpayer money, we've sent him first class to Las Vegas, we've sent him to Seattle, we sent him to Arizona, he's had over $5,000 spending money out of our taxpayer money, and he still refuses to do an inspection. The director is a cabinet-level official, which means she's picked by the governor himself, and obviously with the governor's aide here, they are obviously in sight of what's going on here and allowing this to continue.
Yeah, I think, I think though that Senator Titegwe being here speaks a lot, that if she says that by Wednesday they would conduct an inspection using the checklist they used for the other facilities, and we'll come back Wednesday and then we'll get an update.
Okay, our last episode with Telo, um, Titegwe was that we put in our handbook that we talked about last time, and we gave her the electronic format, and she agreed to take it over to Telo Titegwe, uh, Director Titegwe. And she did, and they decided that they didn't wanna read it on the electronic format, uh, and I was disqualified. And Director Titegwe sat here last time and said, "I never turned it in." And Telo, didn't we turn that in to the director?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Okay, and then hopefully-
So when they yell about lies-
And hopefully by-
Unfortunately, it was, it was a sketch, so-
And hopefully by Wednesday, we'd have the Attorney General here as well, so. Gentlemen, thank you. Okay, Senator Titegwe, just one more, um, issue that I'm excited about actually, because I'm, I think this could be the test case to, Ms. Hansen? Okay, here's another quarantine facility matter that I asked Cindy Hansen to come and, uh, give us an update, and then maybe, maybe, Senator Titegwe, you can provide some responses, as you committed to providing on behalf of the territorial vet. Cindy?
Hi. Hafada Chairman, Ms. Bisho, and Senator Yamashita. I'm here tonight to discuss entry regulations as they pertain to service dogs, uh, which appear to be in regu, uh, in violation of the ADA Act. And, um, this was brought to my attention by my sister, Jeanette Hansen, who, um, is scheduled to travel to Guam on September 8th with her service dog. Um, my sister contacted, uh, first contacted Dr. Poole on February 2nd of this year through a friend to find out what she needed to do to arrange to have her service dog, um, enter Guam. And, um, Dr. Poole assured her that her service dog would be able to enter Guam with, um, minimal problems, and my sister has been filling out the paperwork to arrange to have her dog, uh, come through Guam. And, um, however, as it gets closer to the date of her arrival, she has begun to encounter some problems. One of the things that she has discovered, or, one of the problems or issues that she has encountered is that she has been asked by the Department of Agriculture to supply, uh, training documents, um, that indicate that her dog has been professionally trained. Um, this is in violation of ADA regulations, um, there are no such thing actually as professionally trained documents for service dogs. Um, Dr. Poole responded to my sister and actually quoted, um, the law from the ADA, and I've bought a copy of that, and he actually quoted what I'm going to quote to you, which says service animals are defined as dogs that are individually trained to do work as, uh, or perform tasks for people with disabilities. The ADA does allow animals to be individually trained by their disabled handlers, uh, which is what my sister has done. Uh, my sister has actually been a dog trainer for over 25 years, including here in Guam for Harper Valley Kennels. Um, she worked for Dr. Harper and, um, and also for Bambi Leon, who runs the Guam Animal in Needs Program here. The next problem that she ran into, um, was that Guam does not have a veterinarian that is available to, uh, meet flights that come into the airport outside of the eight to five hours. My sister's flight arrives at 6:30. What they are proposing is that my sister's dog be separated from her, um, overnight. My sister has a diabetic life-threatening condition. My sister's dog has saved her life three times in the last six years. My sister cannot be separated from her dog. Um, and I don't know why we don't have a situation where the veterinarian is able to go and, um, do this type of testing, where the dog can leave the airport immediately with a person that needs this type of, of a requirement. Furthermore, um, my sister was advised that, um, and she was advised this by Dr. Poole and also Harper Valley Kennels, that regardless of whether her dog spends zero to five days in quarantine, she would be, um, required to pay a fee of $495 to Harper Valley Kennels. According to the ADA law for service dogs, people with disabilities who use service animals cannot be charged fees that are charged to other patrons without animals. If a business requires a deposit or fee to be paid by patrons with pets, it must be waived or, uh, it must waive the charge for service animals. So in other words, unless Harper Valley Kennels plans on charging every passenger with a, who's traveling that doesn't have a pet, that same $495, they cannot charge my sister that amount either. The Department of Agriculture, in the course of my sister filing this entry permit, have lost my sister's paperwork three times. Um, I do understand that they require a FAVIN tighter, um, documentation, they lost that the first time that it was sent to them by the original laboratory, they have confirmed that they have now received it. Guam's minimal, um, requirement that we have for dogs to come into our island, because we are rabies-free, is .5. My sister's dog is 4.56, which is nearly five times the requirement. This dog is not a danger, there's no reason for this dog to be separated from my sister. So, we ask that in light of that, and in light of the fact that our current guidelines are clearly in violation of ADA standards, that my sister's dog be allowed to come into Guam, uh, without having to go through quarantine.
And you brought up a good point, um, Ms. Titegwe, and this is something I want you to take back to the director and the territorial vet. When, when they're clearing these animals at the airport, they're still subject to paying for the animal quarantine facility even though they didn't stay there. And that's, I think, what this hearing is uncovering, is how the current laws are not being followed and are being circumvented so that the, the business practice of, of this procedure is, is being preserved.
Well, and another sad, I'm sorry-
And so I think there's two issues here, I'm sorry, two issues. One issue is the territorial vet should be available at 6:30 PM to screen and clear that, uh, animal when they come in. And number two, that animal should not have to go to quarantine if they met all the requirements of the FAVIN testing, and that was my law, that reduced it from 100, from actually 120 days, all the way down to 30 days, then you have a five-day and a 24-hour period, and I, you know, we did those things, uh, throughout the years.
You, you, in, in one of, um, his correspondences to my sister as well, he mentioned that this situation has come up numerous times, which, you know, really distressed my sister, it means that she's not the only disabled person who has brought a service animal into Guam that has dealt with this. It means that this has happened to other disabled people who just-
Gave up.
Yeah, or didn't have a big mouth sister who had a friend that was a senator, who, you know, who was kind enough to, you know, stand up for people.
Okay, um, Telo?
Thank you Senator, um, this was brought to my attention actually yesterday, so I did some research and called Ben Servino, the director of DISIT, um, to see if he knew of any kind of, um, uh, service animal, uh, dealing with, um, people with diabetes. Um, and it's ironic, because my father is the president of the Diabetes Association. And, um, we, we talked about this, Ben was in awe, he didn't know anything about it, so he did some research online to find out if there was actually, um, this kind of service animal, and if- animal and if there were facilities that actually gave the certification to train it, like most service animals that need to be trained by a facility that is regulated, you know, to follow the same thing. So he came back with his research and found no certification of such animals that were trained individuals with diabetes. So he's still researching that and so far he's come up with nothing. At this point, from what I gather, the dog is in Hawaii, correct, right now?
Actually, no, the dog is in Hawaii. The dog is in Florida. Hawaii has already cleared the dog to go through.
Right. And that's what we thought we would do. And Dr. Poole sent an email. I asked him to send an email to Hawaii to ask for why there was a waiver given to this particular animal.
Probably to do with this section of the law that does include diabetes.
So we then asked, requested Dr. Poole to send the justification to Guam. And then at that point, we're going to be giving it to the Attorney General's office to see if, to make sure that we do not break any laws here, that we don't not allow anything, even on the, even on the ADA side, too. We want to make sure that everything is intact. As you know, Department of Agriculture, they don't have their attorneys all the time and they rely on the Attorney General for assistance in guiding them to ensure that no laws are broken. And if this is the case, and believe me, I'm a great, I'm a big advocate for people with disabilities because of my father, that, you know, I'm going to move forward on this to make sure that we follow the law, to make sure it's there and make sure that our DISIT director as well is very aware of individuals with disabilities that have a service dog that they can actually train for this kind of stuff. So, like I said, again, we are waiting for the response from Hawaii and on the justification for allowing this waiver to Hawaii. And then once we receive that, we'll take it to the Attorney General and move on this.
Well, first of all, those kinds of service dogs do exist. And I happened to be watching Animal Planet a couple of months ago. And there's such a thing where these pets are trained to smell for the...
Yes, he is scent-trained, exactly.
Yes, scent-trained. And so when the sugar content of that individual spikes, the dog signals them somehow so they, you know, they take insulin and they... I just happened to be watching TV late one night and that was what was on the program. So they exist and you probably can Google it and confirm that those service animals exist. Number two, even if this was not a service dog, the quarantine laws require immediate clearing. And I don't understand why these individuals are still subject to $495 even after they met the 120-day requirement. So even if you're not going to treat this dog as a service dog, this dog went through the FAVIN testing and I was happy that you did that 120 days in advance. We're not saying just bring any animal in because they're a service dog. But, Telo, what I want you to really look and see is how many people are being charged $495 to go through animal quarantine even if their dog was cleared at the airport?
Okay.
Whether they're there one day or five days. And I think this is what these status hearings are uncovering. You know, the extra loops that people have to go through, financial hoops that aren't absolutely necessary.
Well, it's also horrendous to think that these disabled people are being separated from their service animal. I mean, imagine if you're a blind person and you rely on your animal to help you and now, you know, your animal's gone for 24 hours. I mean, that must be incredibly frightening for this person. Or in the case of like my sister, you know, she relies on this animal to let her know, you know, if she's going to have a sugar spike.
And you know, I'm...
There was, one thing with regards to that, on her sister's part, there was an email that I was looking at that said that the training for this dog was done by her sister. So there was no real, you know, certification or anything like that.
Well, the law says, right here, it says individually trained.
Yeah, service animals are defined as dogs that are individually trained to do work or perform tasks for people with disabilities.
The ADA actually encourages people to individually train their dogs so that the dog actually responds to their own commands. But further, they recognize that the majority of disabled people cannot afford to pay 10 and up to $20,000 to go take their dogs to these facilities. You know, many disabled people are also socially, you know, socially, economically disadvantaged.
Yeah, and again, the whole theme of these status hearings is customer service, public service. So if Dr. Poole's not available at 6:30 PM, maybe he can designate another veterinarian to be, to do the clearing.
If you increase our department's budget, that would be very nice. But just to let you know, we just don't want to set anything where we get individuals who saying that I trained my dog. I mean, we don't want to set a precedence where...
A precedence where you're helping disabled people?
No, no, for people who are not disabled, who are not disabled and taking advantage of people with, individuals with disabilities. I mean, believe me, I don't want to see that happen because what could happen is anybody can say, I trained my dog, I need him for this because I have a disability and to get him, you know, to waiver everything. We don't want to set that up. So we have to be very careful and screening to make sure there really truly is someone with, an individual with disabilities. This is true and the ADA does recognize that. But I think it's also important to note that the ADA actually has only two training requirements of a service dog. One is that the animal be able to perform the task or service that is required for the disabled person. And the other is that the dog is be able, be able to behave appropriately in public accommodation settings. In other words, that it be able to behave in places like restaurants, hospitals, libraries. And that's it. That's the only two things that are required. And, you know, people can teach dogs to do that. So, again, I think that what has happened here is that we have just, you know, we're just not up to speed with the changes that the ADA has made with regards to the training of service dogs.
And again, just because it's a service dog, they don't get exempted from the test that determines if they have rabies or not.
Sure. Absolutely not.
And I want to make that very clear to the community that we're not just saying, this is a service dog, bring them in.
Right, exactly.
Because Dr. Poole might say, I'm trying to cause harm on the community because he misrepresents my positions over and over.
No, and I think if anything...
Agree to disagree, Senator. Agree to disagree.
Okay, I think we're done here. Cindy, we'll track this. Telo, thank you for your participation tonight.
I'll keep in touch with Cindy. We're friends, you know, so I will make sure that we hook her up also with the DISIT and as well.
I was going to say, because she comes in next week, so...
Okay. Well, we'll do what we can, but we'll make sure we follow the law. And like I said earlier, we just don't want other people taking advantage of those who really need that help with people with disabilities. Senator Yamashita is one of the greatest advocates for individuals with disabilities and I'm sure she's going to be calling me to make sure I follow through, as always. A great senator. Thank you, Senator Yamashita. And Senator Ruspicio, I appreciate you tolerating me as you have done in the past, but you know I'm a woman that once you tell it to me, it gets done, so...
Well, I want to make sure you have every word that you're able to say tonight. So if you're done, and Cindy Hansen, if you're done?
Yes, sir.
We stand in recess till Wednesday at 5:30 PM. Thank you, everybody.
Okay.